Right. Good evening, everyone. This is the Tuesday, January 25th, 2022 meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. This meeting, sorry, this virtual meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Without adequate electronic notice of this virtual meeting has been provided by way of publication in the 100 county Democrat and Courier-News newspapers on or about January 19th, 2022. In addition, notice of meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building located at 38 Park Avenue. And any handicap accessible interest is there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons if any requesting copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get everyone pleased to rise as you were able for the flag salute.
Flag allegiance to the flag. America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, visible of liberty and justice for all.
All right, Eileen, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Driver?
Yeah.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Mr. Daschler?
Here, still here.
Mrs. Engelhardt is excused. Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Budney?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
And Mr. Clerico, Ms. McManus, and Mr. Troutman are excused.
All right. Good evening, all. Item one on the agenda, as always, time for public comments. Eileen, did we get anything on the voicemail, hard copy mail or email before the meeting?
No, we didn't. Mayor, there is one marketing email on the public comments email. Someone would like to take a look at that.
Yeah, now that we have to include spam in our public comments.
Yeah.
Kara, do we need to include spam in our public comments?
You do not.
All right, excellent. This opportunity for members of the public who wish to speak, to do so. If you'd like to, please click on raise hand either at the bottom or top of the screen of the Zoom interface. If you're on a phone, it's star nine. Okay, seeing none, we'll move along in the agenda. Item two, comments from the mayor.
So I have nothing. I think Caitlin will talk about what we did at council last night. The only other thing I would jump in there, and I think I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago. Liberty, or not Liberty Village, Nail Canth property, also known as Guitar Boy property, you will be seeing perhaps a presentation from a potential redeveloper coming up on that relatively soon, February. And I just don't know a date yet. It's an exciting, I think people are gonna like it. It's a really cool concept. On a interesting piece of property that they're looking at. So it is housing. It's also some retail. Retail, which I will decline to announce yet because it's too exciting and I just have to keep everybody guessing for a while. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Please, we need more pharmacies, banks, and pizza places. If we could get some of those, that'd be great.
I'll see what I can do about that. You want the nail salon and maybe a massage?
Yep.
Place as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Caitlin, council comments. Caitlin, you're muted.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry. Here we go. So last night, we did have our regular council meeting. George Malone, who was interested in redeveloping the Liberty Village site, came and did a presentation as he's done a few different presentations to the public and expressed his interest and his ideas for the Liberty Village site. The council did vote to designate him as the redeveloper, obviously understanding that there's lots more details of the redeveloper agreement is kind of the next step. But this is signifying him, designating him, and moving that forward for the Liberty Village. We did have a special resolution about, oh, the engineer. But see, I'm gonna need, like, are you there? Can you do the engineer one? I'm not gonna explain it properly.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The engineer one.
Oh, so yeah, so last night at council, we hired a special projects engineer. So basically, you know, when the planning board, as you guys know, then you have a list of resolutions that is attached to the approval on a project. Well, turns out that nobody was really making sure they did those, those conditions. Took me a couple of years to figure this out. Thankfully, we had no big projects. It started to come to light with the monument sign on the circle regarding the escrow they're required to deposit with the borough. Anyways, with our change in engineering firms to CME for a borough engineering, Mr. Clerico approached me and suggested that we hire a special projects engineer to make sure that the planning board items are being followed by the applicant once they get building and start building. So he will be doing that in that capacity for the borough. It's paid for by escrow. So it's more or less budget neutral, except for any miscellaneous expenses that we may encounter.
Thank you.
That was passed last night.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Caitlin. HPC, I do not see HPC chair in the audience. I don't think we had any resolutions come through since our last meeting. So I don't think there's anything from HPC. They did, they did reorganize. I got a note from Councilwoman Tilly. They, you're keeping basically the same everything as last year. So there's really no, there's no changeover on HPC. All right, item five on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our January 11th, 2022 reorganization meeting. Those minutes were previously circulated. Can I get a motion in a second on the minutes?
So move, Cook.
Budney seconds. Brian, second. Sure.
I'll give Karen the next one.
Okay. Any clarifications, corrections, or adjustments to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I link, if he's called a roll.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Daschler?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
And Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Item number six on the agenda is a spot for discussion for the 2021 annual report. Kara, can you set this up for us?
Yep, absolutely. So at the end of every year, the Board of Adjustment, or in this case, the Planning Board acting as the Board of Adjustment, is required to review all variances that were granted in the prior year and just kind of see if it seems to make sense to make any recommendations to the governing body as to ordinance changes. For instance, if in a particular zone, you find yourself consistently granting your setback variances because your ordinance doesn't work, then there should be a recommendation or the Board can make a recommendation to council that they take a look at that particular issue and consider amending the ordinance. Sometimes there are other comments that are added in there as well because if there's going to be some recommendations made, sometimes other comments are included in that at the same time for efficiency purposes. But that's the purpose of the statute. That's what you're required to do every year, and that's what you're looking to do right now.
Great, thanks. So I did want to say that I got a note from, it was two things. One, I got a note from Susan with some ideas that I want to kind of read into for discussion. I did ask our professionals, in particular Beth, if there was anything that she wanted us to include as well. The email I got from Beth, the only, I'm just gonna read it verbatim just so everyone has it. It's not long. It's a sentence. "The only zoning issues that came up this year that I would recommend addressing have been or are on their way to being addressed." And those were affordable housing set aside, private garages, and downtown parking requirements. Those three items, I can tell you right now, there's draft, there's a draft ordinance language circulating. I don't know, Caitlin, if councils, I don't think councils reduced it yet because we would have seen it, but it's working its way through on clarifying parking structure. We had that issue come up in an application. We've already started talking about the question of affordable housing. That I think that's also working its way through an ordinance review. And the third issue that she mentioned was that of, well, the garages and the downtown parking requirements. The downtown parking requirements council already addressed through ordinance last year, removing the requirement for active, active uses not needing additional parking on site for restaurants and retail, but still maintaining that the DB for office use, right? We, that was already, that's council already acted on that. Those are the three things that she mentioned.
We don't, we have not yet worked on the affordable housing stuff. That language is not out there yet that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Garage parking one, only you've seen it and myself and Beth. I don't get sent out why they're over the next couple of days.
Okay, so for certain, then, I would say, Kara, if we're taking, if you're taking notes on issues to include, to work on the part for the garages question, and then the issue that we, the issue, if you remember, in the application that happened last year was if we're going to encourage mixed-use development in the downtown business zone, and we want to make sure that you, projects of a certain scale would trigger the need, our affordable housing set aside. There's really nothing in the ordinance that we ran into a gap between what our ordinance says and what, and what we want to see happen. So, so that's an issue that Beth's aware of as our planner. And I think certainly we would want to just document, you know, the specific question of ensuring consistency with the rest of the zones in town for the affordable housing, inclusionary housing set aside in the DB1, DB2 zone. I mean, just we can put it like in one sentence like that. And I don't think it needs to be any more detailed than that. Those were the ones from Beth. I, I do, I'm gonna read a checklist of things that Susan wanted circulated, just, and I'm, these aren't things that are, that are hard. I just want to put them in the record there. Things that came up was parking minimum, I'm gonna read her list, parking minimums, use for clubs, theaters, use for social services, billboards, public art, outbuildings, ADUs, live-work products incorporated into single-family and multifamily development, outside dining, work needing on the circulation elements, work on making sure that our approval process is diagrammed and easier to see and understand, and then sustainability policies in the ordinance and master plan. So that was, I'm sorry, there was one more thing here. The question of raised crosswalks, raised, in the middle of a mid-block crosswalk being raised or at grade came up in a application for Courthouse Square, if I'm remembering correctly. It was that one. So those were issues that Susan just wanted us to put out there, to consider. And so that's, so I just wanted, you know, get those started with those ideas. And I wanted to hear from everybody about other things we wanted to kind of transmit to council in this letter about issues that we think may need to get addressed, knowing that some of, some of this is also part of our master plan work, but that's an independent process than, than this statutory requirement today. Our statutory requirement really has to do with any variances we, we granted. And so having read that other stuff out there, and it's now in the back of your heads floating around, the last page of the annual report that Eileen circulated lists all of the variances granted last year. And so I'm gonna just ask this, I'm gonna ask it this way on the, on the page eight. Is there any pattern here that anyone wants us to transmit to the governing body? Brian, please.
I, I'm unmuted. I, I had one, but I saw it more as a, as something to look at during the, the master plan reevaluation. Maybe it's not best for this, but looking at the option of permitting accessory dwelling units within residential areas as a means for housing. So I don't know if this, if you think that would be appropriate spot for, for that transmittal or something that's really meant for the master plan reevaluation.
Well, it definitely goes into the master plan work. There's no argument. It goes into, there into our housing element. I would say, and Kara, please correct me if I'm wrong, because we didn't actually have an application that proposed an ADU where there was a variance question to grant or not grant, it doesn't necessarily need to go here today, right? And we could raise it in a transmittal letter to council, just say, this is something that we think other municipalities in New Jersey are adding, and we might want to consider this. We might want to leave it like that. But, but again, so I'm, I'm just, yeah, but, but I think we can put it in there.
Yeah, I can certainly separate it from the statutory requirements that relate to applications that were heard by the board. Because even, even the recommendations with regard to affordable housing and the private garages isn't exactly what the statute's referring to. It's, that's more saying, listen, we realize we have a hole or an issue or an inconsistency or a question, so we should address it. The statute, again, relates more to, you know, things that you've granted or not granted that would warrant ordinance revisions. But I could say there's, there's nothing based upon the variances, if that's where the board goes, that requires revisions. However, these things were discussed and somewhere along the way, the, the planning board and council should discuss if ordinance changes or how ordinance changes could be made to address these issues, something along those lines.
Right, right. I think that's probably what we're going for here. Other folks want to jump in?
Hey Kara, a question for you. Is there, there's never a bad time to give suggestions for ordinances, right? It doesn't have to be done now, like when Susan's list, when, like, outdoor dining. I don't think we had anything that really dealt with outdoor dining, so it's not like we have to do that now, right? I mean, we can, as long as we have a, if, if we all start thinking about the things on Susan's list and Beth's list to say, you know, if there are suggestions, but it's not, it's not tied into the statutory requirements for.
No, no, it's not. I mean, tonight, all we have to do is report out on variances granted. And if you look at page eight of the annual report, the variances grant, the variances asked for, and then granted, it's, it's, it's five applications, you know, and so that's really the only statutory stuff that we have to talk to council about right now. And then, I mean, and, and I don't know, Kara, I mean, I don't even think there's a, is there a timeliness even requirement on this annual report?
There's, there's not that I know of. I mean, we try to get it done as quickly as possible in the beginning of the year, only because usually if you don't, you forget, and you get in the middle of all of the applications, so it's best to just get it out of the way. And again, it's, it's, it should be usually something that's fairly simple. If you had 25, 30 applications that involve variances, maybe it's a little bit more difficult. But there's, you can at any point in time as a board have a discussion regarding making a recommendation to council. There, there's no prohibition against you doing that. There's no, nothing that says if you don't do it by June of a particular year, you can't do it after that. You know, you could, at any point in time, you could schedule a meeting to discuss all of these. However, you'd like to do it. They're pretty open as far as everything else. This is just what the, this particular item requires.
So certainly, as we do the master plan work, we're gonna get a list of things that the ordinance is need to deal with, like, that's gonna come anyway. The one thing I will throw into the discussion that I am seeing from the, from the stuff that Eileen summarized on page eight, there was this question of billboards. Because billboards are not a permitted use. And whether or not, I mean, and we have to now, digital billboards, and so is there any, are there any thoughts about any change we might want to make to the ordinance based on the fact that we, in the last two year, well, I guess it was two years, right? Yeah, the last two years, we've had two applications involving billboards, which are the, the, the first one that was heard was far more complicated. The, the one that we heard last year was the board determined to be an existing non-conforming use. But it was, it was a little complicated because the fact that we, the fact that they're taking down the existing wooden static billboard meant it was an abandonment of the use. And then we, so we had to grant the, the D variance for the, for the permitted use of an electronic billboard. So I mean, I don't know if anyone has any strong thoughts on, we, we don't have to say anything, but I'm, it just one that was granted, a, a variance, and it definitely occupied a certain amount of attention over the last several years on those two sites. Karen, please. You're muted, I'm sorry.
I'll get this eventually. I think we'd have it by now. The only strong feeling I have about the signs is that, as you say, the second one was a slightly different situation because it was a pre-existing use. We just changed that for them. The first one was much more complicated. And so to your point of whether we recommend anything changing going forward, I'd like to say that I don't think we should until in, in the agreement for that billboard, it was, there was a lot of contention on certain aspects of it. And part of the agreement was that we would be able to rescind this if it, if it was proven to be an unsafe situation, where it was. And I know that's particular to that site, but I would think it would be best for us to hold off recommending any wholesale changes to whether we allow more of these until we know that that, that concern doesn't come to fruition.
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's a really important point. Yeah, I wasn't advocating for any change. I was just saying that this was something that we spent a lot of time on, and I just wanted to highlight it. And I don't know if other folks have opinions on it. If, if folks want to, don't want to touch the billboard question and leave it alone, I'm fine with that, too. I, I just, I wanted to get.
There was something that Todd said during part of the discussions was, I think, I can't remember the exact word to use, but it was along the lines of just because we're allowing this one doesn't mean we are changing our general ordinance. And so I think it's important to kind of stick to that right now until we understand how this might affect the rest of the borough.
Jimmy, Jimmy, you were gonna say something?
I, I was, I was of the same opinion. You're better off to force them to come through to really ask for something like that and leave it out of the ordinance, so it makes it as difficult for the next guy as it did previously.
That's fine. Yeah, Kara, good.
And, and Jeff, that's specifically something that we could put in the recommendation to council. You know, the board recognizes and acknowledges that over the past two years, there have been two billboards that were approved. The boards discussed it and believes that at this time, it's the best just not to make any changes. You know, because there were the differences between the two and have them come in for use variances, so you could evaluate the particular circumstances regarding each one. So you're acknowledging it, you know what happened, but you've discussed it, and this is what you've decided to do.
Do I, I'm looking around faces here. I mean, is it, Betsy's, I see Betsy's got something. You're muted, Betsy, sorry. Mayor, you're muted.
You know, I agree with Karen and Jim. I think it should be a D variance. I think they should come in and prove to us why it is. And I think that each, each one of projects such as that needs to be considered on its own merits with a thorough planning board review.
Okay, does anyone, so I, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. So Kara, let's, let's make sure that that makes it in, that we, that we talked about it, and that the consensus of the board is that don't change anything and that there should be, you know, substantive.
Make it a use.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
I think it's worthy of follow-up discussion with some of the borough stakeholders, especially the business community and the FCP to get, I'd be curious to get their read on, like, advertising venues like billboards.
Yeah.
At some point.
Okay. Well, yeah, we can, we can, we can certainly come back. As Todd said, we can, there's nothing, there's nothing saying we have to, this is the one and done, right? We can, we can absolutely come back to that. So let's continue that conversation. Okay. The only other variances that were grant, you know, that were considered, let me put it that way, had to deal with like parking and structures with 91 Main. So I, I mean, I don't know, there's, there's no real pattern of, of, of stuff there. So other than the billboard is, are we comfortable with where we landed with that and letting Kara come up with some language there to, to transmit that to to council?
I, I would think that on the parking and so on, because there was a lot of discussion about how far it was to walk or where you're gonna park when you have a site plan like Mr. Roth had, that possibly during our updating the amendments for the master plan, we take a lot, a harder look at what, what is reality when it comes to what's comfortable to walk and park. You know, you don't walk halfway across town to leave your car behind to have it broken into overnight.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna say maybe, we, again, maybe along those lines, we recognize that variance relief was granted for parking. We think it's something that is, can, you know, requires ongoing work, and we're intending to put that into our master plan work. And we don't have a specific recommendation at present, but it is something that we want to, we know is important, right? Is, is, I'm, am I capturing that, Jim? Is that?
Yeah. Yes.
Right, it looks like you were gonna jump in.
Oh, I was gonna say, nothing specific. And I, just to make sure I'm reading this right, the, the actual variances that we, like, reviewed over the year aren't actually listed in the document, though, right?
No, they're just, it's listed in a summary form, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just find it, I guess, you know, I could look back at the actual applications, each one of them. But if we're trying to analyze the review or the variances and trying to see if there's a pattern of anything without actually having the variances requested in front of us, it does make it a little bit more difficult, I'd say. I don't know what the requirements for this document are, you know, don't want to make any more work for somebody, but I guess having that list would be a little bit easier. That's all.
No, I hear what you're saying. I think if, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, what is on page eight is actually all that we need by statute. Like, that minimum level is what, is what we were required to put in there. And if we chose to do more, that's entirely up to us. Am I right, Kara?
Uh, yes, I, I, and I would just follow that up with, and there are no recommendations to council based upon the granting of these variances, or, you know, yes, there are, and here's what they are. That would just be the only, only omitted section. I, I, I don't believe there's a requirement by statute to say that there's a 40-foot front yard setback in the DB zone, and we granted 10-foot setbacks on three applications. And I, I don't think that's, that's a requirement, just what the variances were and what they pertain to.
In, in defining a variance, you're saying just D or C? Because Trent's got a great point. I mean, if you look back at this in five years, none of us will remember what these were.
Well, and she did also attach what the, the list of applications. So isn't that attachment to the resolution itself? And if not, we certainly can make it one.
But there's not, when you look through this, though, there is not a, correct me if I'm wrong, Eileen, if you look through this, it's, nowhere does it say what the, what the variances were.
Well, I, I think in the, in the last page, I do have something that has what was before the zoning board of adjustment, which would be your D variances, and then what the planning board, because we are a combined board, I separated those applications out. That's how it had been done in the past. So I kind of kept the, the format the same, but the, you know, whatever the board would like, I could, you know, make this a little bit more detailed or.
Well, I think the. Well, I think the issue is, for example, I'm, I'm not, not, not to pick on any particular application, but. The, uh, the application for D variances, C variances and site plan for Lee Roth. That was denied in two thousand twenty-one, the first application. It doesn't say what those DNC variances are there. And I think Trent's point is. It would be possibly helpful and Todd saying for us and for posterity to, to say there was a D variance for. Even if it's, even if it's not as detailed as Kara's saying about forty.
Yeah, I was.
But like, more like um, parking structure, you know, for parking or for use of an accessory parking structure or. Um, part, you know, C variances for parking standards and setbacks. Like if we get, you're kind of just like, maybe it would be helpful to have that top line is what I'm hearing. Of the kind of.
You could always, always attach the resolutions to the um. Or at least the conclusions, I, I'm not sure. Um, of the resolutions of approval or denial.
I think if you're gonna do that, you're better off doing the whole resolution. So there's the context. I don't know if you necessarily want to do that. Um, I, I think it, it could be as easy as saying that, you know, X application granted a front yard, a C variance for front yard setback. Uh, D variance for use, D variance for FAR, uh, you know, something along those lines. Um, and even could extend it a little bit further to say, you know, here's what's required, here's what's existing, here's what was proposed. I mean, it could be fairly simple. Um, and still give you the detail that you're looking for, cause that is a great point. You know, to be able to, you know, I think you're, you're looking at it on a yearly basis. But someone may want to go back at, at a particular time and say, well, you know what, we haven't done this. Last year it wasn't an issue, but over the past five years it was an issue. So maybe it is something that we should consider.
I, I, I agree on that last point because I think what we're talking about is the repetitiveness of a variance being granted for like. Uh, setbacks, because why were they being granted? Is it because the ordinance is wrong or people are trying to do too much?
Okay, I, I just, you know, I, I am, I am, you know, I don't want to make work that's not going to be useful. But, but it does sound like there would be use here. There'd be some value to doing some of this. Um. So, so are we, are we asking, well, here's, I, I, let me ask it two ways. One is, are we asking for the report that we're going to transmit this year to be changed? Or do we want to make a change in policy going forward, starting with twenty twenty-two so that we've got it? Um, so that like this stands right now, but going forward, cause like, cause I know what Eileen does is that every meeting, you know, she's got the. This is the date, this is the meeting. And so, you know, if you keep that as an open document throughout the year, it's a whole lot easier to track it as you go rather than go retroactively backwards. And fill in those gaps. So I, I don't know what people, what, what people are thinking.
I would prefer going forward because you can always look back during master plan.
Okay, so, so leave it as it is now, but then going forward to start, is that, does that, does that make sense for you, Eileen?
Yeah, um, I just wanna, you know, I'd have to work with Kara to um, make sure that. Uh, you know, the variances, if it's a use variance that it is being, you know, what is being permitted and what. I don't, I don't know if I need to list all of the requirements and what is permitted and then we're giving that.
No, I'm, my recommendation, you, you know what, on the.
I don't want it to get too wordy. I just want to get to the point.
Yep.
But, but you know how at the end of an application, you, normally the applicant sums it up and then we tend to sum it up again to say. So you're asking for six C variances, one for height, one for parking. That's the way I was looking at it, because I think to Trent's point, if you saw that and you thought, wow, another parking, wow, another parking. I wouldn't even go so far as saying they required eleven, they had sixteen, whatever it was. I, but that's how I would, would look at it. Um, when we're making that summation to say, so you're looking for six. Yeah, it's six Cs, you know, that, that, that would be my recommendation, because I think you could.
Okay, that's, that, that sounds reasonable and I think Eileen's got a sense of what we're talking about and then she and Kara can work together and this is going to be going forward for. Twenty-two and beyond. Okay, is there anything else we want to transmit to council for the twenty-one report? Um, that we can put into, to here?
Um, so since we did talk about stormwater management. Excuse me. I, I would like you to recommend us, um, our stormwater management is basically the boilerplate provided by the state. Um, I'd really would like to strengthen that. I think that twenty twenty-one showed us some real, gave us some really strong lessons about flooding in the borough. That perhaps we were not prepared for. And I don't think that this was a one-off. I think we're going to continue to see it happen. And I think that we have to have a, have to really work on strengthening that stormwater ordinance that we have. Particularly with new development, any new development in town.
And I, and I think it's, I think it's interesting because we've had several applications where it's taken a while to get us to stormwater development solutions. Like a lot of the time with the engineering has been around stormwater management questions. Um, and so we had that with ninety-one main, we, we, we still haven't, you know, we deemed Captiva complete, but there was a, there was a question there. About stormwater management last year.
It's gonna come up.
It's gonna come, that's gonna come up next year, you know, in this current year, we definitely, um, we talked about, you know, in, in twenty-one. We deemed the redevelopment plan for the Liberty Village area. Um, substantively consistent with our ordinance, but there was discussion about stormwater on that. Site and I, I know that, so, so I think, I think we're well within our grounds, because it came up on number, a number of applications this year. We're well within our rights to say that. We need to look to strengthen stormwater.
And I'd like to see the master plan when that gets done too, have a really strong section on that as well as to. What our master plan for stormwater management is going to be in the borough.
Under the directives from DCA for resiliency, or don't we have to do that anyway?
We have to, we have to put in the land use element. We have to address climate change. Is, is what the DCA directive is. And so what that, what that actually looks like is. Beth will give us the, the nitty-gritty of it, but right now, you can simply say, oh, well, you know. We're central New Jersey, so you know, we'll ju, you know, like, you, you can skirt it. If you don't, if you don't want to be a, aggressive about it and I'm, I'm hearing from, not just from the mayor, but from a lot of folks that we need to be on, we have to be a bit more proactive on this. You know, so, so I think, I, and I know Beth doesn't want to, I, I know Beth wants us to do this right, so it's not like. It's not like we're not going to do it right, but, but the, the DCA requirements are a little bit.
Argy.
So they just, yeah, and you know what, they just came out, in fact, I did a webinar today. Um, presentation, I couldn't stay for the whole thing, but, so the DEP does have a new. Toolkit, stormwater management toolkit that they've recently come out with, it's got all sorts of great tools. It's got, you know, you want to do software to do your modeling, it's got those recommendations. Um, how to, you know, measure capacity and all that, it's all there. So we have a great engineer. Uh, Jared Harris, who, you know, is our longtime source engineer, which would, you know, be part of the stormwater management. Um, looking at that as well, so.
Good, good. Anybody else have items that we want to include? All right, um, so Kara, procedurally, we need to, um. I guess by resolution, um. Uh, report on the findings and, 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 and that we have to have some language in there. So, so what, we're. It's on the agenda, so we don't have to amend the agenda per se, but, or, or, what do you got?
What I would recommend is that the resolution that was prepared be adopted with the following amendments. And the amendments will now reflect what's been discussed. Um, let me say them here and between Eileen and I, we can make them and then have it signed. Um, the stormwater management that the mayor discussed, uh, that, that the existing uh, borough ordinances. Should be uh, expanded to, to better address or further address stormwater management more than just what's required by the state. Uh, the affordable housing language, we should ensure consistency with affordable housing in the DB one and DB two districts. Uh, the issue of private garages uh, should be addressed. Uh, the issue of billboards was discussed by the board and even though there were. Um, so there were two applications in which billboards were permitted by way of D variance. The board has decided that it does not wish to make any. Ordinance amendments at this time and it shall remain a use variance uh, until further action. And then the only question I have was the one that Jim had talked about, uh, looking at the parking and the walking distance and things like that. Um, how do we want to word that one? So I guess, Jim, what you were saying was. Um, that the issue came up as to how far someone might feel comfortable or the board might feel comfortable.
Comfortable or unsafe, yeah.
Okay.
So are we talking, Jim, are you talking about residential applications or are you talking about commercial stuff?
I'm, I'm thinking more along what we just went through with uh, Mr. Ross, uh, project where we discussed how far away parking would be or. You know, how far away should a person be able to park their car and not have a problem? Um, I think maybe it's just a little think tanking during the. Updates on the master plan to have somebody, see if there's any recommendations from any adjoining towns for limits. That you should be able to have your parking assigned to.
So maybe it's not something we put in here, but maybe that as we're going through the master plan, we suggest that. You know, for residential applications, any off-street parking that is presented as available to. The development, um, can be considered only if it's, you know, twenty, you know, whatever, half a mile away or whatever, whatever the, the. Distance is, I don't know, I, I walk. Quarter mile away, something.
Quarter mile is a five, quarter mile is a five-minute walk.
Okay.
That's, that's standard, yeah.
So yeah, something along those lines, but I, I think I'm hearing that that's better addressed at the master plan time.
Yeah, that's probably a master plan thing, good, okay. Um, so, so, all right, so that, was there anything else that you had, Kara? I think that was. All right, um, can I get a motion, um, to adopt? Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh four, um, with the amendments and provisions that Kara just laid out.
So move.
That was Mr. Hill. Second, who seconded?
Cook.
Cook seconds, okay. Uh, any further discussion? All right, thanks. Uh, can we call the roll, please?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Gao's McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasna?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
And Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. Uh, item eight on the agenda is uh, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh five, Lee Roth, ninety-one Main Street Block, twenty-one Lot twenty-five. Uh, Kara, I understand we're not there yet with that?
Not yet, we'll have it for the meeting.
All right, so we will have that for our next meeting, Eileen, if you can forward that, move that along to the next meetings agenda. Um, all right, um, which moves us to chair items, item nine, um, our next meeting on February eighth. Other than the much anticipated Roth resolution, is there anything else, Eileen, that we have coming up?
Uh, no, um, I have not heard anything from Captiva at this point. Um, I was um, kinda, I'm going to ask the board, I will reach out to, I guess, the attorney for the applicant. To see when they are going to um, resubmit those revised plans. I do not have that yet. I will need to get that.
Principal was here at the meeting for quite a while, he just left, so. Perhaps he'll, himself as well.
Yeah, we, we, there was, there was additional ma- material that they were planning on getting to, um. Mostly specifically to Clerico, um, for review a few weeks ago and it, the data's come and passed. Cause we thought that they were going to be able to be heard on the eighth, but, but, or the twenty, I'm sorry, or the, 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 the second meeting in February, but we don't know. Yeah, so. Um, all right, so there's that and I know that. And I, I don't know if there's any other chatter about anything else. I think that's where we're at. I do know, um, just as a report that out that, um. Um, I am hopeful, um, that uh, the approval, hopeful, hopeful approval from the county for. Um, the economic development grant, uh, for, in support of the master plan work is forthcoming at a meeting very soon. Um, I know I keep saying that, but they keep pushing it off to the next meeting and they've assured us that it's not a question of. Of approvals, it's more of a question of, um, uh, timing and that's fine. Um. I sent a note to Bill Hans, uh, the Borough CFO last week. Um, at the mayor's request to start whatever process needs to happen for an ordinance. For budget for the master plan work in anticipation of this work. I had not heard back from Bill, so maybe Caitlin, if you could follow up with Bill and see. Like, did he not get my email? Does he not love me anymore? But uh, just to make sure that, cause I, I'd like for us to. I mean, if at all possible, I'd like to get it on the next council agenda in two weeks, if, if that's, if that's feasible. Um, I'd like for it to be kind of done before y'all dive too deep into budget, which I know is coming up now anyway, so. Um.
Our first budget meeting is Thursday, Caitlin. Yeah, when you talk to Bill, you might also ask, normally it's done as. They did, they do master plans as an emergency expenditure. I'm not quite sure what the secret sauce is of all of, that makes it happen that way. Um, but you can also ask him if we can just pay for it out of surplus.
Which I.
He may say no.
Yeah, I put that in an email, uh, Mayor. I actually said, can we do this out of surplus? I also wondered if we could do it out of the federal pot of money too. I don't know if it's eligible or not, so. So I, I'm looking for a way for it to be as cost efficient for the borough as possible, uh, which is why we applied for. Twenty thousand dollars to the, to the county to help for it, so.
So in the meantime, what I would do, Jeff, is Caitlin is. If we think it's gonna be fifty, we assume we're gonna get twenty from the county. I would pad it out, uh, by another ten thousand, just. Just in case, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, it just goes back in the surplus.
Yeah, so, so, and Bill's has been copied, he's got all the documents for proposals from. Tom McManus, uh, for the work, so that's there. Cause I'd like for us, if we don't. Hopefully, I'm hoping that maybe, um, Beth, um, we can jump into some early master plan work at the meeting on the sixth, if we don't have any. Sorry, the eighth, if we don't have any, um, other substantive agenda items that are gonna occupy terribly too much time, so.
Uh, does Jay have to update his budget for the master plan, because we're doing the parking and roads and so on?
I think it's all rolled into Beth's proposal.
Okay, okay.
Jay, Jay talked, Jay gave Beth a number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we may want to talk to Beth though about the, the stormwater management, because I really, you know, think she was just gonna do a high level. I'd like to. Get a little more into the weeds on that.
Okay, so, so maybe we're talking sixty, not fifty, to make sure that there's adequate room for that. Okay, that's not a problem, yeah. Okay. Um. I don't have anything else. Does anybody have anything else?
I won't be here on the eighth.
Okay. Um. And I think that's, actually, yeah, we're gonna, sorry, Karen, good.
Um, sorry, Jeff, I know, I, maybe I, it just came to me, I was just thinking about this today and I, sorry if I didn't. Give you a heads up about, I was gonna ask this question. Um, I'm just thinking for myself particularly about, um. Training, when I first joined planning board, I went on the training and, um. I can't remember, I was trying to look for, I know they mentioned something about. Repeat trainings and when that was appropriate and I can't remember when it was, so I don't know if this question for you, well, you, I'm sure you would know, but also to Kara. Wha- what's required for us to undertake to make sure that we're compliant as a board and what I need to do?
I, I don't believe there's any repeat training that's required. Yeah, you have to do it at the outset, they're always available. Of course, at any time if you want to refresh or, but all you're required to do is take that initial course.
Which, by the way, Tony, you, you did, I, I saw that Eileen sent Tony the email on that, so. And I'm assuming Hannah and Trent, you guys both did that last year, right? So you're, you're all, we're all good, so. Caitlin, I don't think electeds need to do it, I'm not sure, maybe they do.
No, the, uh.
I think so.
Class one and class three do not need to, um, as far as I know. Um, there are, um, ex, um, classes for experienced, uh, land use. Um, and planning board members, so I can forward those, um, emails to, to the board as they become available.
If you wouldn't mind, the, the stuff from NJPO, from the planning officials, we used to get a hard copy on our piles on, on the, on the dais. Um, of those that had some of that information and obviously some of them have gone digital, I haven't seen that, any of that stuff in two years, so. Eileen, if you wouldn't mind forwarding along anything from NJPO that you feel is worth us to look at?
When I, when I've looked at, at their website, um, I looked at it yesterday and, uh, they have a new registration, um, system. So they've asked the board secretaries to reach out for that link. Um, they, I know there was one on January twenty-ninth. They, I know there was one on January 29th. I don't, and they, there's ones, it seems like February and, and March, but they don't have the hours at this point. If anybody wants to go on and take a look for themselves, they can, it's always the NJPO.org. But as things come through, I'll just forward it to the board for all training classes.
That's, thanks. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Any other chair items? All right. Bills were previously circulated. Can I get a motion to audit the bills?
I'll make a motion to audit the bills. Cook.
I got a second.
Hill second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? Eileen?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Gais McCormick? Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasna?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you.
You, um, professional reports, Cara, do we have anything?
I don't have anything, just quickly, not to drag out the meeting, but I was on the land use law section webinar, not webinar, but the land use section of the bar the other day. And there was a interesting discussion about a recommendation that was going to be made by the land use law section as to whether or not these meetings should be continued virtually. Whether they should be required to go back in person. And obviously all of this is subject to whatever orders, executive orders come down. Or to have a hybrid established. So the land use law section is talking about it and there were a lot of different pros and cons that I, I didn't expect it. And it's actually very split, believe it or not. So we did not come to an exact decision about what to recommend to the bar and then ultimately to, you know, the legislature, but I just, I found that interesting. You should know those discussions are out there.
I'm a fan of the hybrid, but we'll see where, where, where the regs land for us. I love having more access than less for, for folks. Interesting. All right. And I don't have anything, the only thing I will say, there was a couple of emails that I was copied on with the engineer and the planner having to do with one was about courthouse square. And that's just mostly just making sure the conditions are being met. That project's moving forward and there's really nothing to report there. And then there was this issue about Captiva that we mentioned and we're, we're going to figure out what's going on there with that application. But I didn't see anything else from them that required. You know, the report, we don't need an executive session, correct?
Do not.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Good silence. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Karen. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you all.
We're just not used to short meetings, Jim.
I, I'm trying here. All right. Have a good night, everybody. I'll see you.
Everybody, take care.
Bye.